Want to call the meeting to order, please. Before we start and get into the agenda, there's a couple items I'd just like to mention. The first one is our very successful LEAF Fair that we had on Saturday. I think it went, just was a great event. And everywhere you looked, and there's a lot of people to thank for doing that, most certainly, Karen and the LEAF Fair Committee, most certainly Eric Sawtell and his wife and his merry band, who put all the food together and put the tent up, et cetera, et cetera. But it was a very, very good event, and everybody should be proud of it. And I did not stay for the fireworks, but I understand they were absolutely spectacular.
They were some of the best.
So that's great. The second item is, last week, we had a practice drill of the Emergency Operations Center. And Karen participated in that. County Administrator Julie Glover participated in it. Of course, the two chiefs, I participated in it just as an observer, really, and Bill Booth. And I must say that overall, there was two people there from the state that put this drill on. The drill was basically, we had a tanker overturn and explode at the circle, et cetera. And I gotta tell you, we did very, very well. We're gonna get a report from them. We had a couple of shortcomings on some equipments. The report will point that out, and that's gonna help us get some grant money to fix that. So overall, though, it went very, very well. Everybody knew what to say and knew what to do, and I think the two representatives were very impressed with how all of that went. So those things happened, and they went very well for the town. So we'll open up to public comment. If you have something you'd like to say, raise your hand, I'll recognize you. You come to the podium, you look at us, and you have three minutes to tell us how you feel. Anybody? All right, that was quick. So we're gonna move on then to Jen Messiter, who is a Sustainability Committee applicant. Hello.
Paul Gazowski, 46 Limprelee Lane, I'm the Chair of the Sustainability Committee. And introducing Jennifer Messiter to the select board. She should be a familiar face, she served on other committees. And we're excited, she's starting to join us, she's been helping us since spring, so very valuable. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Messiter, 147 Loudly Falls Road. I'm not quite sure what you need to know from me, or...
I don't need to know anything. I already know all I need to know. Don't leave yet.
Don't leave yet.
No, I'm joking.
Okay, I'd like to enter a motion to approve a full three-year membership appointment for our Jen Messiter to serve on the Sustainability Committee. Is that second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Great.
Congratulations.
So next on the list is a discussion about cemetery maintenance. Is there anybody here from the cemetery representing the Cemetery Committee?
Okay, can I, are we gonna sign her phone later, or...
He's got it remounted. Jane Neal sent me an email, I think it was Friday, that she would not be able to attend because of the election tomorrow. And I understand, although I wasn't told this directly, that the other two trustees didn't want to be here unless all three could be there. But certainly, the Board can have a discussion regarding cemetery maintenance. I asked Mr. Stevens to be here in case the Board had any questions about anything or anything in the material that was in the agenda packet.
What do you think? Should we discuss it? There is certainly a topic of discussion.
What I would like us to do is, because the budget's already started this year, I'd like us to, can you continue on for having the Highway Department do it this fiscal year? And when the trustees of the cemeteries come to the ABC and to us, let's discuss in terms of how we change things. I did have a question, and I don't know if Randy can answer it, or I'd like to not answer it, since he's a citizen. But there's a breakdown in terms of all the mowing that the Highway Department does. Now, you guys do all this yourselves. If this was to go away, do you have other things you can do, or is this like part of, you know, all the stuff that you do when nothing else gets left off? I'm not sure if I explained that well, but...
Back years ago, before we had Little River Park and everything, and when the whole time department started, I was the only employee at that point in time. But the Sleutman made the cemetery, the transfer station, and the highway all in one group. So we always did the cemeteries, but then the park came along, and that was added on. So, you know, it does take quite a bit of our time, or let me put the Highway Department's time, it's not an hour anymore. I think we could, I think the power could find enough to do without it, but I agree with your suggestion that, seeing as the way the budget is, that at least the mowing should be kept until a new budget, or at least until the end of the season. There should only be like two more mows. All the little cemeteries have been mowed, and the big ones, so everything has been mowed recently. I wouldn't expect more than two more rounds, looking at my chart and what we did last year and everything. So, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but I would think the lease could be done until the end of the season, and the discussion could continue as part of the budget.
Well, I think the issue that comes up, though, is the fact that up until Randy retired, he served two roles for the cemetery. He was the sexton, and he also managed, if you would, the maintenance, the maintenance of the cemetery. If I heard correctly in the last meeting, now that Randy has retired, they are going to hire a sexton. And per the RSA, that sexton is responsible for managing the maintenance of the cemetery before the sexton and the manager were one and the same. Today, that's gonna be different. He's not in a position to say, "I'm gonna do, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that" on those particular days. So, you know, the system is changing a little bit, and I guess the question is, if the sexton, well, there's another change, too. We have a new highway supervisor coming onboard, proposed, and it's not a done-done deal yet, but he may elect, he may come up and say, "Hey, you know, I don't have enough resources to do everything we're doing." You know, the amount of acreage we're mowing has gone up considerably over the years. And so the question would be, would we want to then just, he'd either want more people or be able to utilize his people more on, like you said, roads and culverts, et cetera, et cetera. So the question would be, at least the cemetery trustees need to be thinking about the fact that they may have to either contract it out, or do whatever, or sit down with the highway, the new highway man, and come up with some kind of agreement on how it's gonna work.
So it would mean that the sexton would come to the ABC in a joint or select meeting to present a budget requirement that the sexton really was going to, and probably the trustees, but really, at this point?
Yeah. Does that, they're usually ones that, doesn't mean the sexton can't come.
Yes.
But they're also volunteers, so expecting them to find a sexton plus contract services, I'm just thinking, we don't wanna let the cemeteries go hay.
Oh, of course not.
We don't want to stack some caskets out there, we need to be buried, because we need to take care of that.
Absolutely.
So I'm just thinking in terms of logistically, how is this gonna work? And definitely, you need to work with the trustees of the cemeteries, but, you know, I think we need to have something in place so those things can still get done at the cemetery, so that we don't look like we're disrespecting the people in there.
It all comes down to town, anyway, and the town's responsible for maintaining the cemeteries. How we do it, through trustees, or a select voter, or town managers, over the people. But the bottom end comes down to the town. It is the town.
Right. Just on top of the field, we need to get it done, but...
Right, we have to get it done. I don't know if it's any interest to you, but I did up a couple charts this morning of the burial section. We sort of talked about the home one, but the burial section is the revenue.
Julie shared that with us.
Okay. So, anyway, and it, you know, it's up and down, but it really is not a ton of revenue that comes out for as much. I won't say trouble, but it's just...
I think, I mean, what are you scheduled to get, I think, done?
No, I think, I can foresee a point in time where the new Highway Department manager comes in and says, "Hey, I need to either add a person or do something, because, you know, we're just spread too thin to do everything we need to do." And the question is, do we then go to the cemetery trustees and say, "Hey, we need to look at subcontracting this out," or whatever?
Randy, can you reply me? Did we change rates for burials in here at some point?
Yeah, it's been several years.
So there was a point where we increased it?
We're in the lowest, or anybody I've heard around. I know the trustees haven't updated, it's just haven't done anything. It's kind of a, you know, you gotta kind of look around, whatever they else have done.
So in terms of, there's a fee that we charge the family, and then we pay somebody to come in to dig the grave itself and then to fill it in. So is that like a pass-through?
The Highway Department, all the cremations the Highway Department has done in the past, forever, just about, the full burials, we have a mini excavator come in for a flat fee, and he just digs the hole, we, the Highway Department, does their thing else.
But that gets charged to the family as well? How does that work?
It's a one, one flat fee.
Over everything? And this $5,000, so this $5,000 isn't, well, I don't know, the one that's pretty...
You can see, it's a pretty choppy.
So that's very new, but there's expense associated with that?
There's some bad years in there.
That doesn't show, that's a gross revenue, not a...
Okay, so, okay. So we made $5,000 revenue, but we don't know exactly how much expense was, so we're probably making nothing.
I would say it's a break-even.
I'll break even.
Yeah, I was gonna go through, of course, most of them now are on the weekends, too, most of the burials. I was gonna go through and figure out the last year, but I think we only had one during the week. Whatever, what we did this past year, so, in my case, I was on salary, it didn't matter, but you have to stop paying overtime for somebody, so sorry.
Great, thank you.
So we just want to kind of put this on the shelf until the ABC meets, and meets with the...
It, just, we need to make sure that they're prepared to have that discussion at that particular time, so it doesn't get put off and put off.
I agree. Okay. All right, we're gonna move along. Mr. Scott Carlson, New Hampshire Utility Arborist. Yes, sir, please.
My name is Scott Carlson, I'm with New Hampshire Electric Co-op, and I was asked to be here to talk about our Integrated Vegetation Management Program, specifically herbicide applications that happen after our mechanical clearing operations. So I have several printouts, I don't know that I brought enough for everybody, but I think I have nine or 10 copies of each, a map of our intended area for mechanical clearing...
That might be part of our attachments activity?
That I'm not sure.
No.
Yes. Okay, so you have, if anybody out here would like maps of the areas, of course.
Why is that easy to place?
I also have, basically, some bullet points that are an overview of what we do. So I'd be happy to supply those to the Board and to folks who want a copy of them. And for anybody that would like a copy of, an overview of our entire Integrated Vegetation Management Program, I also have copies of that.
Is that so?
Some of this may be redundant, but we can, I'm certainly here to answer any questions that anybody has, whether it's about the mechanical clearing that's just started, or whether it is the herbicide applications that follow up to the mechanical clearing. I'd be happy to start with the handout that is dated September 10, 2018. Did everybody get a copy of the map that would like one?
Yeah.
The program that we have at the Co-op this year, our mechanical clearings are going to focus on our three-phase and multi-phase power lines that are in town, which are highlighted in blue on the map. Next year, we're gonna bid out the single-phase taps that are off of that main line. So we have, I wanna say this project that Davey started last week is about 10 and 1/2 miles in length, and it's all the stuff that's highlighted in the thick blue line on that After the mechanical operations, after the guys with the chainsaws and chippers and bucket trucks come through, we have a separate contractor that handles all of our herbicide applications on our system in New Hampshire, its Vegetation Control Service. And they survey the lines and notify the appropriate abutters where the applications are appropriate to happen. These applications, on most of what we're doing down here this year, are gonna be a basal bark application, which is a mixture of herbicide and mineral oil that's sprayed onto a cut stump. They target only hardwood species that re-sprout after they are cut. So the reason we do that is, when you cut an oak tree down, or when you cut a maple tree down, it sprouts into 10 or 15 different oak trees and maple trees. And if we target the application to that specific stump and kill the root system of that tree, it promotes the growth of the grasses and herbs, stuff that we want growing underneath the lines that will outcompete the tall-growing tree species. That's basically what we do. All our applications are made with a backpack sprayer, which is basically a person with pump can and a wand that targets individual stumps.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure can.
It might be out of, might be out of sequence. I note here that you're using Roundup.
We're using a glyphosate product. That's for...
Sure, sure.
Sure. That's a trade name that...
I know, but I'm interested in the fact that there's recently been a court settlement for a person that was based on the cause being by Roundup, and the settlement was $280 million. And I'm just wondering if that was taken into consideration before, I mean, obviously, there's some data out there that says Roundup creates a problem.
Sure.
So I'm just wondering if that's been looked at, again, relative to the use of Roundup, if you would, a large-scale basis?
I would say not in this case. No. No. Most of our applications are not foliar applications, which is what Roundup is used for. Because of the statutes in New Hampshire that have restrictions on what is allowed to be sprayed on road sides, we are basically relegated to using a different product. Only in off-road rightaways are we allowed to use a foliar application.
Okay.
Yeah. And that settlement was pretty recent, I would probably say, in the last couple months.
I was gonna say, a month, maybe a month and a half.
Yep. We applied for the permit like we have to do every year in January, when the state starts, the Department of, Division of Pesticide Control accepts permit applications. We apply in January, and we wait about four months or five months to get that permit back from the state. So this was, certainly any settlements were made after we applied for the permit for this year. As I said, most of our applications are done using this basal bark treatment. It's specific, we don't go through and spray everything that's growing under the power lines, because we don't want everything that's under the power lines to die. In some instances, there's no need to use herbicide in some of the areas that we do the trimming in, because there are no targets in those areas. If we go through and only cut down pine trees or hemlocks, there's no need to do a stump treatment on those, because they don't sprout from the stump. Let's see, what else? That, basically, the last paragraph, or number five, the bullet point on this, is basically an overview that we get into a little bit more depth in the definition or the description in our NHGC, Integrated Vegetation Management Program. The reason we do this is to sort of jumpstart the biological control of competition from native herbaceous plants out competing the stuff that we all want to grow into the power lines. That's why we do it. I was just wondering if anybody had any questions about the process or the reasoning behind why we do it?
I'm gonna, herbicide treatment, key points, I want you to attach this. It says, "Give me members the chance to opt out of the treatment is one of the reasons why you're applying for this notification." Who are the members?
Members are our customers. Because we are a not-for-profit electric company, a co-op, our members are, the people that buy electricity from us also own the company. So we're not like Eversource, or Unitil, or Liberty, where their customers, they actually have a vote in electing our Board of Directors. So membership is basically, if we have a service wire that goes to your house and feeds a meter on your house, you're a member of the co-op.
So you could refuse to not get the mixture of mineral oil and...
Sure. Yep, and that's why we do the notification. The state requires us to do the notification to the town, first of all, and through several different newspapers of statewide and local circulation. And then the contractors go out and do a notification, if they find that your property is something that would be worthwhile to do a treatment on, then they notify you, and you have the right to opt out of it. Yeah. And we don't give up anybody, if anybody, you know, if you don't want it, I'm not gonna argue with you and tell you that you should have it, it's your property, and if you don't want it on there, that's your choice.
The first part was cutting the trees down, right?
Yeah, and that's usually the more painful part for most people.
I was gonna say, do they have the right to opt out of getting your tree cut?
Um, yes and no.
Yes and no?
Yes and no. It's a complicated question. A long time ago, when the co-op started, they invested a lot of money in, or in time and effort into getting easements for their power lines, which gives us the legal right to clear the power lines. Eversource, and Liberty, and Unitil do not generally have easements for their distribution lines, so they need to permission their customers to get permission to cut stuff from that right away. Certainly enough people tell me that they do not want trees cut, and I basically go out there and meet with them and discuss the reasons why we do it, mostly for safety, separately for reliability. If we have the legal right and we have an easement to cut the power line, generally speaking, we cut the power line out and keep it clear. We do not have easements for everything, so sometimes people do have the legal right to tell us, "No, we can't do anything about it." Yeah.
Can you tell us, when is this gonna start, and when will it start, in terms of this whole process for this year?
Davey Tree, I'm not sure, some of you have already maybe seen the bucket trucks working around the neighborhood. They started last Wednesday, and they have 10 and 1/2 miles to trim, they've currently got two trucks working, and I've been told that it's supposed to be wrapped up by the beginning of November. And they've got about 10 and 1/2 miles to trim between on-road and off-road right away.
And then, when do they do the spring process, in terms of all those stuffs?
Well, they have to have it done by the time there's snow on the ground, so being that this project started kind of late in the year, depends on when it snows. Basically, VCS is gonna send somebody up once there's a sizable amount of rightaway done, and start notifying people for the areas that have been cleared. So I would imagine, probably in the next couple weeks, somebody's gonna be around leaving hangers on doors or knocking on doors, doing notifications for that. Yeah.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Well, look.
Thanks.
Any questions from, okay, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You're quite welcome. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Phil. Come here.
No problem. Karen Rossi, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The development off of Pinkham Road is progressing, and they, our engineer has reviewed the outstanding items to be complete, and they've settled on a number of $650,000 to be bonded in either a line of credit or a performance bond from an insurance company. And I'm here tonight for the approval of that, so once that gets established, we can accept it and continue on.
Can you give us the highlight of what he covers? Is that $650,000? What specific items?
The remainder of the roadway finishing, shoulders, drainage, detention pond.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Oh, yes. Do they have a sister?
Two.
There's two?
Mm-hmm.
One near the road and one further in?
Correct. One at the intersection of Daniels and Armstrong on the opposite side, which is at about 1,000 feet in, and then the other one is halfway around the cul-de-sac.
And how big, 30?
Each is $30,000.
$30,000, okay, thank you.
Okay, move to accept a bond or letter of credit for the Chinburg subdivision on Pinkham Road in the amount of $650,000. I'll give a second.
Sorry.
On the favor?
Aye.
Who do you leave or that? You got any contracts to build, huh?
We do, they have one sold.
I went sold. What do you think is, how many houses again, if you remember?
35 single families.
35. Do they have any thoughts about how long it would take to do all 35?
No, they, it's supposed to be, originally, we're gonna do it in phases, but we talked, Julie and I both talked to Eric Chinburg today, and they wanna get going to get their hot market now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's a pretty good market.
Yeah.
Very good market. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Mr. Grandin, Energy Commission Chairman. And Mr. Banks.
Bill Grandin, 14 Allen Lane. I'm sure you're aware, we've had a project for converting, you know, the lights of the safety complex and the transfer station to LEDs. Been looking at that for about a year. We've had several bids. We started, we started maybe last July, and we've had several people come to look at the lights. First was Joe Laduski from the New Hampshire Co-op. He's the administrator of the New Hampshire Safes Program, and he gave us a kind of a schedule of lights and some suggestions. Then we had one bid, which we didn't go with. We had another bid in February from Revision Energy, and another one a little bit later on, I don't even remember his name, I think it was Langlos. Anyways, we had problems comparing the bids, because they had different numbers of lights, and also, they referenced, well, Bill Stevens made a list of the lights and how long he estimated each lights. And we came to the conclusion in March that they were looking at different hours for lights, and the payback periods on the... hours for lights and the payback periods on the, on the bids came out really, really skewed. And so, we decided to start it over. Julie sent out some RFPs, we had three new bids. But basically, I had the same problem with these bids that I did with the last ones and the rest of us on the Energy Committee. We don't have enough technical knowledge about LEDs, we're not engineers. And so, we asked Jim Banks, who has a lot of technical knowledge, to give us some pointers. And by the way, we would like to have Jim on the Energy Committee. He, I mentioned he'd like to join and we'd love to have him. So, without wasting your time, I'd like to turn it over to Jim.
I, I was asked to look at these two proposals and see how they related, and I was amazed at the amount of money involved. They're looking, tens of thousands of dollars. And the basic gist of this is they want to rip everything out, put all new in. So, that would be taken out, a fixture of the same size would be put in that has LEDs in it, not removable, those fluorescent lamps, of course, are removable, and take it all out and put new in. For example, this room, each one of those fixtures, they would take out, this is one of the two quotes, the other quote didn't break it down so I could tell what they were charging for anything, but one of them did. They would charge $140 to take that out and put another one in. Now, they gave the price for the fixture, didn't give the price for the labor, but overall the labor is about a third of the fixture price, so I'm assuming a third. So, there's $140, there's 13 of them in here, so that would cost the town something like $1,750 to take them out of this room and put others in. The co-op may or may not give you half of that back. And the reason I say may is because they want to make sure that the amount of energy saved is worth doing, and if it's a room like this that isn't used a lot, the amount of energy going in here isn't a lot. The money going in to fix the lights doesn't make a difference how long they're used. So, the amount of energy used is what has the co-op interested in giving a rebate or not. So, if they gave you a rebate, that drops the price to $875 if they did it. If not, it's $1,750. What I did with Bill Stevens, about 10 years ago, the town upgraded lighting in the bays out here for the fire equipment and in the transfer station, they took out metal hail lights and they put in fluorescents. And they wanted to do the library at the same time, but the library is on public service, at that time it was public service. Public service had no incentive money, so nothing was done about it. But Bill Stevens and I did it ourselves. I donated ballast, the town bought some energy-saving fluorescent lamps that we put in, we relamped and rebalanced it, the library, and he and I did it in an afternoon. Cost, I know, maybe $300 or something for the lamps, and otherwise it would have been thousands of dollars for a contractor because they had a bid on, and I don't know the numbers on that. So, looking at the possibility of doing the same thing here, there are LED tubes available that drop in in place of those fluorescent tubes. You simply take out the fluorescent tubes, you put in the LED tubes. We have to make sure that the LED tubes are UL listed for use with the ballast that's in there, and that's something that would be coordinated with the building inspector, he would approve of everything before it was done, so that we don't pull in any fast ones. But now, changing fluorescents to LEDs is basically the same thing as replacing the lamps when they burn out. You go up there with a ladder and you flip the bottom of the fixture down, try to take bugs out that are in there, and then change lamps. So, the labor is very little, and the lamps for this fixture, the three of them, are available online for about $10 total. So, instead of spending $140 and maybe getting half of it back, spend $10, you don't ask for anything back because the co-op isn't going to pay half of that, it's just do it.
Actually, there might be a possibility that there is a rebate on that, too.
Well, there might, but it's so small, I, it doesn't seem, seem, seem worth pulling in. Estimating very, very loosely, the payback on doing this room, I'm looking at about $100 a year. So, we could spend $130 doing all the fixtures and pay back in a year or two doing it ourselves, or paying $1,750 or $875 and the payback that's much, much longer. There is one other expense to the town, to dealing with these, if we take the fluorescents out and put in LEDs, and that is disposal of the fluorescent lamps. That was included in the price of the $140, and we would have to pay for that through the dump, which they do anyway. There would be one very large bulge of fluorescent lamps going through the dump at one time. There may be more economical ways of handling that than the way they do now, because the numbers would be very large for a short time. Now, the question comes up, how much light comes out? Well, the LEDs open out as many lumens as the fluorescent lamps do, but the room will be brighter, because the fluorescent lamps put light out in all directions equally, and much of that light hits something else that has to bounce back down again. The light going out through the top has to go through the dirt that's on the lamp, and then the reflector sends it back down through the dirt again. So, a lot of the light out of fluorescent lamp is lost, whereas the LEDs put all light down where you want it. So, there'll actually be less light, but it'll be brighter. In terms of wattage, that's a 32-watt lamp, each one of those, and it would be replaced with an 18-watt LED. So, you're not going to cut half, you won't save half, but it costs very little to do this. And that's what, when I saw that, I couldn't make a decision which one of these two proposals was, was a valid one to look at, because this is so different and wouldn't have to all be done overnight. The suggestion was made by the committee the other day, we should do this at a time when we're not doing air conditioning, so you could see the change in electrical costs pronounced as would be in winter. In the summertime, air conditioning would still be there and you wouldn't see as big a change. So, that's, that's my proposal. There certainly is, is energy to be saved on some of the outside lighting, whether we would do this ourselves or not. Remember, everything that's here has been maintained by the town. After these fixtures were put in, equipment bays and the transfer station, and those lights are now on motion detectors, the walk underneath, the light comes on. Because the lights blown off rapidly, the fluorescents don't last very long, and the lamps that were put in when they did the redo, the redo, those lamps started to burn out, so the town brought in a man lift and they did all of them, they changed them all at one time. They've used a man lift to repair lamps that are outside on poles. So, all of the maintenance has been done by people here, and presumably could be done again if we changed out.
So, I don't mean to cut you off, but are you going to come back at us now with another proposal to say, "Here's what we suggest doing, and here's the cost and the savings"?
Yeah, we talked about, or Jim agreed to put together some numbers, maybe in a week or two, we could get, get some numbers. And it occurred to me that, I mean, we were looking at the safety complex and the transfer station, but why not the library and, and the town hall and the other ones, too?
Well, but those are likely to change shortly.
Ah, okay.
I think that those probably would be ripped out, most likely to be completed. I don't, I don't think you want to look at...
So, let me, Lou, let me, let me suggest, Lou, that, that the Energy Committee reconvene and come up with a proposal to say, "Here's what we think we should do to what buildings, here's the cost..."
Yes.
"...and, and the ROI, and we go from there?"
Yeah, that's, that's what we were agreeing for.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just state that I think we ought to go with the RFP? I mean, there's more to it than just plugging in a light bulb. I mean, yes, that is part of it. Both of these proposals, and certainly the LED conversions, recommend replacing some of the fixtures in its entirety, so for a number of the lights, I think it's the high bay lights, they recommend changing out the fixtures.
Do they say why?
I think part of it is because, well, generally, the best way to do an LED conversion is to replace all your fixtures. People don't do that because that's the most expensive way to do it, but in order to get the most bang for your buck in terms of energy efficiency, and you would replace all the fixtures. I'm not saying that that's what we should do, and that's not what these are proposing. These are also proposing to do what they call kind of plug-and-play. But they also do an analysis of all of the lighting and determine, just to make sure, because they have to do this for the Energy Co-op, to make sure that what we're asking for is the appropriate solution. Certainly, having our own staff do it isn't free, and, and it's a lot of lights, it's 316 lights.
This building and the transfer station?
Between this building and the transfer station. And if we, if you just took the average of the 316 lights and the cost after the rebate, for example, using LED conversions, who was the low bidder, parent low bidder, it's like $85 a light. So, it's not overwhelmingly, in my mind, expensive, and I'm, I'm, I'm just not comfortable saying we're going to do it ourselves, all 316 lights and have us, if, if we were having trouble analyzing the bids, I'm not sure how we're going to determine what to go by for 316 lights and then having our staff install it and get the equipment to install them, which in some cases, yes, it's just a ladder. I'm just saying, you know, we've been talking about this for a very long time, and the solution that we decided on was to go out to bid and get a professional company, that this is what they do. I mean, obviously, LED conversions, that's what they do. So, I just want to put it out there that this was the process that we were going to follow, and I'm not sure that we ultimately save money by trying to piecemeal it ourselves.
My, my question would be, if, if you get the same bang just by replacing tubes, why wouldn't the companies just do that?
They are.
They're just replacing tubes?
In some cases, yes.
Very few, very, very few.
In some cases, well, for, I think for all the fluorescents, that's what they're doing.
No, they're taking the ballast out, they're putting themselves ballasted LEDs, the word isn't the right word, ballast.
Right, because LEDs don't require a ballast.
They require a driver.
But, well, but they, but they don't even, there is this other solution where you just keep everything in place and put a bulb in, but they don't, they don't last as long, and it's not, it's not the right way to do it, it's the inexpensive way to do it, but it's not necessarily the right way to do it.
So, you're asking us to go forward with the RFP?
I'm just, I'm not, I'm just saying, I think that we ought to consider sticking with our plan.
But nothing stops us to considering all three options, right?
We'll do, we'll do whatever the board wants to do.
Well, my thing would be, there's, there's a wise man that once did a presentation about energy savings, and he said, "I'm not here to talk about energy savings, I'm here to talk about saving you money." And if it costs $85 to replace a unit, and we're going to save a dollar for energy for that particular unit or period here, that's 85 years to get payback, that's way too long. So, I would like to know from the committee, what's the ROI in this, all three of those particular options?
I think it's about five years for this, for this building.
Whatever it is, I would want to know what that is, because if it's a really long time, by the time you go to replace those things, there's going to be something even better out there that, you know, we're going to be throwing that out.
Well, it's in their proposal, as I'm saying, without flipping to the page.
I don't know what the ROI is on just replacing the bulbs.
Depends on how many hours it runs. The closets, that'll cost $140 to do one of these in a closet, and they show the energies, the money saved is 85 cents for the year.
So, that's 140 years to get payback.
Yeah. And the co-op won't pay half of that either.
So, that's what I'm looking for. I'm not intrigued by doing something like that, that doesn't make any sense. But if you've got other ones that are being used, that the payback is really short, that might be something we consider. I'd like to see them all.
What's short?
Short?
Yeah.
Well, like, I don't, in terms of a fixture, maybe 10 years, maybe? I don't know.
Well, again, that's in the proposals, they tell us what the ROI is.
But I don't know that for just replacing the bulbs.
Well, they're, they rolled all of that in overall. I don't, they didn't break it down like each fixture, what's the ROI on each fixture? Do you know what I mean? They took the entire project, the estimated wattage, the estimated savings.
Well, I guess, we have people in town that are good at this, I don't let them do what they need to do with their expertise and then come back to us.
Why don't we stay with, with where we were going? You come back with a proposal based on that, with the detail, and then we can look at everything on a, on a tabletop and, and make a wise decision.
And maybe even have some other people with technical knowledge look at it, too, to give you, to give you an opinion.
Step one, step one, bring us, bring us what you, what you can put together that says, "Here's our, here's what we're suggesting, here's, here's the dollars, here's the subtrations, and we go from there." Okay?
Sure.
All right. One other point, though, is a concern of mine with respect to liability. If these companies put these things in, the liability switches to them. If you can guarantee me that Bill would grace this thing, that's what you're saying right now.
Well, and there would be a building permit produced that would monitor the whole thing.
And if that would remove the liability associated, I want to know that piece, too, so I'm going to look, try to administer a deal that, look into that issue.
Well, I think the, the liability on replacing a light bulb is relatively low. I mean, if we're replacing fixtures, I think...
No, it's replacing light bulbs that match whatever that ballast is in there, right?
Well, yeah, right. But they would be UL labeled to operate with that ballast.
All right, can't directly check Bill just to make sure it's for liability issues, that's all I'm asking.
I mean, you ask why, why would they want to change a whole fixture? Because the guys that are in the business make more money that way. I mean, that's the, the grand mall, the way to do it. Just changing the lamps, as we're proposing, they can't make any money with that. So, they're really not in business to do that.
Right, I, I agree with the chairman, that's redo, let's, let's see what happens. I'll give them a small paper anyways.
Bring us what you got, okay?
Yeah.
All right, good, thank you. Number eight is Legislative Policies, this review.
I, I got a couple, well, I have several that I want to talk about, but there's one there that I just don't understand, and I'm, this is the one from the Hudson Board of Selectment, maybe Julie can explain it to me about the, "CF the NHG will support legislation to lower the baitment interest rates." Did you see that one?
Yeah.
Could you explain that? Is that great?
Well, again, as I pointed out, the New Hampshire Legislature reduced the amount of interest that we can collect on unpaid taxes. Who knows why? Who knows why they did that? Because they like to take revenue away from the towns. I'm not sure that I have any other explanation beyond that. And it certainly, you know, the high interest rates were there as an incentive to pay your taxes and pay them in a timely manner. But Cocker decided to lower the interest. So, I think this is just Hudson saying, "Well, okay, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. If we can't collect as much interest on the unpaid property taxes, then when we issue an abatement to someone, why should we have to pay the higher interest rates that we were paying? That we should, that it should be even on both sides."
The one that I had the most interest in is the one on municipality cooperation, because I think that's, that is where life is going to take us, and that's more than work cooperation between municipalities.
Who was that?
I don't remember. So, that's the one I had, I had the biggest interest in, to be honest with you. I went through them, a lot of them I did not know enough of the background to say, "Yeah, that's great," or, "No, it's not great," or whatever, so I'll have to leave that up to NHG.
You don't want to support the fact that the town moderates it, determined to change the ballot voting?
They still haven't fixed that problem.
No, that's not what I want to talk about.
Yeah, no, that's just the only one I had an interest in.
Well, it doesn't sound good, I mean, let the moderator make that decision. Didn't we cross that issue before?
Yeah, they proposed all kinds of, but they didn't pass anything.
On infrastructure, development use, development and land use, page number 10, municipal under item number three, municipal cooperation, "CF the NHG will support legislation clarifying that municipalities and other political subdivisions may cooperate to form together any functions that they may perform individually, including but not limited to providing services, raising revenues, constructing, and maintaining infrastructure and engaging in economic development affairs." Let me guess.
Someone's waste.
Okay.
Oh, listen, I think that Park Chief was talking about that, too.
Yeah, sure, they're doing this role.
There's initiatives, I mean, like, you know, this simply just makes it a little bit less questionable.
The one that, the one that I had questions on is in terms of page one, it's electronic poll books, I have no idea what that is.
For some towns, they, I think it's literally, you want, they wanted to be able to vote by something like an iPad.
Oh, okay.
But, and they talked about it and they studied it, but the state didn't wanna say it was okay.
Okay. They're feeling what they didn't know anything about, really.
And what about this, well, it's number four here, I don't know what.
You were at the front?
Yeah, the front, "Support a bill that would clarify that the site evaluation committee does not have the jurisdiction on use of municipal roads by merchant utility projects."
This is the northern pass.
Is that what that is?
Yep, northern pass. I think it references in there someplace or.
Yeah, under the explanation.
There you go, northern pass. So basically, it was taken away the municipality's control of the roads.
Yeah.
Jurisdiction, and I don't think that's a good idea.
Or don't think it's a good idea.
So, I'd put down no on that one.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I just wanted to get a better explanation.
I think.
Wait, so you want the site evaluation committee to have?
No, I do not want the site evaluation committee to have jurisdiction.
So you're in support of it?
Yeah, in support of the bill, I don't want them.
Yeah, we don't want them to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Take control of our roadways.
Yes, yes. Now that I know what electronic poll books are, can't they just say a little iPad or something?
I don't know what they can say that.
Oh, the other one I had is under, same section, number thirteen on page four, "Consolidating Policy of Collective Bargaining Amendments," I don't know enough about that to say about the figure of the bill either. Those are the only ones that I had questions about. And this number thirteen is all opposing, so it's not change.
It's all opposing.
Except for the last one, "Contracted Services." Kind of thing, it's, it's understanding, so it's not something the problem is going to get to. So I'll vote for everything? Consensus here, I'm voting for everything.
You're voting for everything?
Well, on behalf, on our behalf.
Yeah, yes.
That's clear.
Yes, can I speed on to one of those?
As I understood it, this selectment, I'd be on the question about electronic poll books.
Yep.
Would now be in favor of that? And I'm asking because I think that any fully electronic voting method is subject to question at some point.
Isn't that what we have now?
No, we have a, we have a paper.
Yeah, but, well, it's scanned.
And so.
So you gotta scan it.
So you gotta scan it, but you can always go back and count the paper again, and if worse came to worse, you could have people sitting in a room and looking at the paper and counting the dots, whereas anything that's entirely electronic, you may not be able to recover what was actually voted, that's the concern.
Well, maybe, some places do do it, but.
So I, I know that places do it and it is an issue as to whether you have a voting method.
Yeah.
That provides you with some kind of tangible, non-electronic record. And there are, I think there are some methods where the input is electronic, but then it produces some kind of permanent record paper or whatever it is, a printout or something, that the voter can say, "Yeah, that's what I voted for." So I would like to say, I would be against any voting method that was entirely electronic that did not leave some kind of a permanent physical record that could be referenced after voting day.
Wouldn't it be up to each municipality to adopt that as a method?
I'm not sure, because it doesn't say.
Doesn't say.
Doesn't say that municipalities would get an option to initiate it or not. The only thing I'll say to that, John, is hanging chads, that's a paper copy.
There are bad paper copies, correct. Ours is not a bad one.
I, I would totally agree with John, by the way.
Yeah, he's made a valid case.
I don't have any, I, I'm, I'm okay with voting no on number three on that particular general administration and government.
Okay, so.
So I'll look for, yes, for all of them, except for general administration and government What's the fight?
Okay, so, "Make a motion to approve proposals put forth by NHMA with the exception of number three, reference electronic polling." You got a second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Next up, Julie Glover, county administrator.
We received the results of the fuel rebate, which was in your agenda packet, and so at this time, I'm recommending that we award the number two heating oil and diesel to Hartman and the propane to D F Richard, and there was no difference in the price whether the town stayed with the decision of the church and or the school or whether we went on our
And that would be three years for the gas, the propane?
And the other two diesel, is that one?
Those are one year.
One year, okay.
Something that might be considered, something that might be considered in the future, the requirements for heating oil have now become the same as, from a sulfur point of view, the same as diesel. So no longer can you burn sulfurous fuel in your house, but you can't burn it in your vehicle. So I, I could see next year, we might wanna bid just one fuel, because they'll all be the same. But that's something we can work on and be ready for next year.
Okay, good, thank you. So, motion to move to award FY nineteen annual fuel bid to Hartman Oil for number two heating oil and offer of diesel for a one-year period, and move to award the FY nineteen annual fuel bid for propane to D F Richard for a three-year period. You got a second?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye. Can you move two things at once? Can you move two things at once?
Yeah.
Sure.
They're tied.
Oh, they're tied together?
Yeah.
All on the proposal.
Was that a yes?
Oh, did he call for vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item, you may recall that we had a warrant article to secure an easement on a smallish piece of property in the town forest, and as, and to have the society for the protection of the nature forest, it's going to be easement over. So they are simply requesting that we attest that there are, that we are not, we either are or we are not aware of any problems concerning solid or hazardous waste which are on the property. I polled department heads, I polled the conservation commission, and no one is aware of any problem on the property, but the board has to agree with this and sign off on it.
Yes, I agree, this is.
To the best, can we say, "To the best of our knowledge"?
Yeah, the sentence on the form doesn't, you know, you're not aware of any, that's what it says. You're not aware of any.
Who's walked the property? Has anybody from the town walked the property? Looked for anything, smelled for anything, do a soil, at least a soil test before we swear?
No.
Shouldn't we?
Yeah.
We gotta go in there. She's out there smelling the soils.
Well, I mean, it, it was never a gas station, it was never.
Well, I know, but still, some people could dump stuff there.
Anne Tappan, Conservation Commission, the trails in that part of town are regularly traversed by one of the conservation members, specifically Catherine Fisher, who, that's part of the school work that she does, and so many, many kids are out there, there's dog walkers, just people that run, so it's regularly used by all sorts of people, you'd be welcome to take a little tour out there, and I think that it's extremely unlikely that there's anything that would be cause for concern. It's a well-used area, it's not something that's back in a corner that nobody ever
I don't have any problem with it. I think it's fine, we should move forward.
Well, plus, he's the one who gets to sign it so we can.
No, it actually requires, it says it wants all three.
Oh, shoot.
Oh, yeah.
He's trying, he's trying.
All right, I'll sign for you.
Okay, good, take my seat, go ahead.
Safety complex sign?
Safety complex sign. This item was actually put on the agenda by the town secretary. You're all aware of, you know, what the sign looks like in front of this building now, it is a bit cumbersome and awkward to have to take it down, bring it inside, change the letters. Certainly a solution that we've looked into in the past is some kind of electronic sign, however, those get very expensive, and by expensive, I mean twenty or thirty thousand dollars expensive. And I'm not sure what, what a solution is that's in the toilet, but we may just want to contemplate.
Are there LED signs that go up if you did a wooden thing over there? There are LEDs, I suppose, too.
Yeah, but those are expensive signs. And then you have to have either a wired or a wireless connection to a computer, because the point of it is that you can program it, you know, by a computer, so. Again, it'd be nice, but it would be expensive, and in a budget year, we're gonna be asking voters to vote on the town center project, both the police and fire departments are looking for additional personnel. I honestly, I'm not sure that proposing a twenty or thirty thousand dollar sign is a good idea.
Yeah, and I'm not so enthusiastic to look like Vegas, I guess.
Not asking for that.
You're not asking for that.
The lights flashing around.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid of some sort, so that two of our people don't have to go out there freezing cold and take the sign down and bring it in and change it or anything.
Have you got bids on anything in terms of pricing?
We, we got some informal prices a couple of years ago.
We looked at a bigger, yeah, what she's talking about, third, twenty.
Robo-tron?
Just a bigger.
Flashing.
Just a bigger sign with like granite and stuff like that, I know we looked at, but.
See if there's, well, not that you don't have enough to do, but see if there's something else that would fit in that particular space, that would be electronic, that you could sort messages, I don't want something like what Newmarket has, you know, like on their building, that's, that's way too big. But if there's something that's relatively sizable, you get maybe two or three lines of something in there that you could change remotely, because you can always run a wire out there, that's a possibility, so.
I still think if you're gonna get two or three lines on it, that, that's still a pretty big sign.
I don't know how much it is. Or could you do the, what is it, the thing that you have at the scoreboard at UNH at the field there?
A Robo-tron?
Yeah, that was only a million bucks, so, you know, we could have that.
I haven't looked at something that's free sta, that's not freestanding, something that would actually hang on what we have already.
Yeah, something that, because you could pull power from.
That's probably a part two.
Well, you could probably pull power from the, the light over on the side there, you wouldn't have to go, you know, between the building or whatever, it's a possibility. But then if you had something that was, had wireless connection out there, that you could have it stitched in, that you could actually.
Let's get some prices.
So, no Jumbo Trons, something small.
We have no problem with Jumbo Trons.
Yeah, we can have little men running across the screen or. Here tonight, old lady, Carrie Brown in the dancing room.
The next item, we received a request from the school to use this building, the first floor, for three consecutive days in October, all day, each day. And I believe they said they anticipated having thirty people each day. I know that the chiefs aren't here, we made them aware of this, and I know that they would certainly have concerns relative to parking, because in the past, with these events, people don't pay attention to signs and then the police and fire end up without places to park. It's during the day and it's all day, so it tends to be disruptive to operations.
Is this the transportation people?
No, this is the school, the school themselves, so, just checking to see what the board's thoughts are, would you wanna allow it? October, three days in October, is it like the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth? I think it's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Thirty, at least thirty people each day, all day.
I would like us to explore, if they use our facilities and we get to do it for free, but when we use theirs, they charge.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, they charge us for using theirs.
Because I was in here right before school started and the transportation people were in here having lunch, and we.
In here or downstairs?
Downstairs.
Downstairs.
They were having lunch.
Yeah.
Well, we did charge them for that, and we have to clean up after them, you know, not that they're total messy people, but there's still janitorial things that need to be done afterwards. So I would like us to explore that, I don't mind them using our facilities, but we use their facilities once a year and they use ours multiple times, and that's a quick.
How much they charge us for using their?
I think it's two hundred, about two hundred.
It's two, it's two or three hundred dollars and it's, they don't charge us to use the room.
It's the maintenance.
They charge us because they have to bring a custodian in on Saturday.
Well, the custodian can clean up on Monday and let it sit there.
Actually, I think we're going on a slippery slope. I'm not enthusiastic of going, and that means probably more than three days in the future or a, a recycling.
Well, they're already using it, John. This is, this is an additional request, so.
This is a new request that happens to be three days in a row, all day.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's getting, one day it's not too bad, three days in a row tends to be really problematic. So I, I just, I get uncomfortable. I wasn't comfortable with the Boy Scouts running through, if you remember that, I voted against it. I just don't think it's a thing to do in a, a public safety conflict.
Well, that's in reference to this, but they're already using the facility, John.
Yeah, but one day, once in a while, not three days in a row.
Well, the transportation, probably twice a year, one day.
Twice a year, one day.
And it's not all day, is it? No, and it's not all day. This felt like an extraordinary request, three days during the day, all day, every day.
And the chiefs happened to be there when the request came in.
Right.
With thirty people, so, and they were very.
They just built an addition, didn't they? They just get a new room?
Yeah, but not for thirty people.
Not for.
They can't find it over in Durham somewhere.
Durham, Redbury, I don't know.
I think we're already doing enough, to be truthful. So my answer is no.
Oh, I'm gonna want to hear from the chiefs anyways, I'm, I'm wondering what their.
Oh, they said no, they're completely against.
They said no, oh, okay.
Completely against it.
Well, Chief Nevin was not, those weren't the words you used.
Oh, yes, they were.
Those weren't the words I heard.
Yes, no, he is.
That was pretty vindictive, wasn't it?
Oh, he is. And Tom is, had three things to say, and that was not having enough parking spots because of thirty people coming in a single car, because no one car pools anymore, cleaning up after them, and bothering Robin with various things throughout the day, computer issues, copies, and with this and that.
So that's why I say, oh.
Well, okay, let's be careful how we say no.
Just say no?
No, no. Just tell them we're not comfortable with tying up the facility for three days with thirty people in a room, given the parking and the emergency vehicle egress, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, Mr. Chair?
Anne Tappin, same.
What's next?
Miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous.
Oh, what, before I forget. So one of the items, sorry, one of the items in the consent agenda was a temporary construction easement for the Tamarack Fire Pond. We also received late-ish today, a similar document for Tamarack, but a different party. So in other words, Tamarack Fire Pond is both on association land and one individual's private property, that's what we had to get to. So I'm going to send two for signature, if you don't mind. I think that's everything I have.
Are we going to move the consent agenda?
Julie, I kind of jumped ahead, because I tied miscellaneous item into consent agenda.
Now, do we actually pay a dollar, or is that just a dollar?
I had to do a lot of these when I did the market project, and they all say that, and I never paid the dollar.
Because it has to be...
I might have paid, one person insisted on getting the dollar.
Because there must be some consideration for which you're...
Yes, you had, in order for it to be a legal contract, there has to be consideration.
This will require my signature.
Hmm?
Oh, good, those are just the chairman.
Well, that's mine? Yeah, because he, that's the one he brings up to try.
Boy, that's the one. Ooh. Little jumpy there, that's good, that's good, that shows the talking on, that's solid waste coming in here. There's even solid oysters in there. They're effervescing in there.
Yeah, I'm going to request that we don't do this again. I realize it was somewhat of an extraordinary situation, because the room is set up downstairs, so we didn't, so...
For elections.
You know this, the endless, we're always scrambling to accommodate people, but I think the time has come where we push back a little. And, you know, if we don't, if we don't have a room, we don't have a room. Or groups maybe consider meeting somewhere else, in other words, can they meet at the transfer station? Could they meet at the highway garage?
They upstairs in the town hall, too, couldn't they?
Yep.
I mean, that's a good room for a small group.
So anyway. Okay, consent agenda.
Okay. Consent agenda, are we ready for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, make a motion to accept it. Consent agenda as presented. Can I get a second? Okay, I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
If you could have, there's only one thing the sign is supposed to say.
One thing, one thing. Why does it have two things?
Well...
You mean it's got two things of one thing? Ten minutes.
He was in one asleep with his evening, though.
Oh, it's got three things.
Ten minutes.
Oh, I might have screwed up. I know you find that hard to believe, but I think maybe, maybe... No, I didn't. Sorry. I know you...
I got the money, John. Yeah, I know, you're up there, you're flying up there, you're flying. You're the top of the line.
All right. Got to get mentally prepared for my poll duty in the morning. Oh, yeah. Mr. Buckley, please remember to be on time.
You're still a course, please remember to be on time. Huh? I'm saying, you're still a course, please remember to be on time. Yeah, because I got a meeting at seven o'clock.
Oh, I'll be there by now, for sure.
Oh, by seven? You're supposed to be there by six.
I'll be there by sure.
You got a meeting at seven o'clock?
Yep. PM, I beg you. PM, yep.
It's like Tuesday. I should be pretty good, but... Tomorrow's my record.
You're right. There's always tomorrow.
Dreams become reality. Uh-oh.
Singing selectmen.
The singing selectmen.
Oh, for God's sake, say, what, you holding those back?
No, you just passed them by.
Hmm. Oh. Oh, beneficent.
Just a slow bit, man.
Okay, miscellaneous unfinished business, start?
T C B C had our Skype session with LBA, and it went not so great, but it was okay. People are filling out their programmatic forms, they're due on the fourteenth, and then they're going to have a walkthrough the week after that. Also, I forwarded you the first update, so hopefully we'll get that. So, things are progressing. The T C B C had a booth at the fair, and we had lots of nice people come in, lots of good comments, no complaints. One of the pre-people said, "It's taking me long enough, hurry up, get it done." So we'll see what the board comes up to be.
That wasn't me.
That wasn't you, no. So that was good. So we had lots of people come through, I don't, I don't know if court took a number in terms of how many who visited, but, you know.
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
They're going to, part of this tour, et cetera, and the users will express their need for space, is that right or wrong?
That's, that's later in the day.
What they want, what they, so on. It's going to be interesting to see...
They're filling out the forms, and then there's a walkthrough, half-day, and then he's going to stay later for, if people need to have meetings with him.
But the same people, I mean, we did space requirements for the other project, too, did we not? So it's going to be interesting to see how they line up, if there's any changes, right?
Yeah, well, many of them are copying what was on the first form onto the second. That's basically what they're doing, because their needs haven't really changed, so we'll see. The other thing I want to bring up, somebody brought to my attention, which I think this is a cool idea, which is kind of really for them, but I'll just pass it along, there's a thing that's called the grat, glass crucher. It's a thing that you purchased, have you heard about this?
Makes sand.
It's pretty cool.
Yeah, it's really neat.
I think we should look into that.
You could use it for foundations and stuff.
The what?
You could use it for foundations.
I think the Solid Waste Committee has that on their list.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Because if we're having harm in getting rid of glass...
Absolutely.
Let's crush it. The thing is, I don't know if there's anybody in there that has it, but we can always say, "Bring us your glass, and we'll take it for a certain fee, and maybe add it."
No, exactly.
But it's just a thought.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that they have it on their list.
Okay, because that was, I watched the video online, it's like, yeah, this is cool.
That's right.
I want one, okay? I thought that was a good thing, so...
Yeah.
Hopefully, and the swap shop had their opening, I noticed the other day, when I went in, there's a whole bunch of people in there, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there, so...
The swap shop is full, as is the immediate surrounding area? Uh, yeah.
And one thing, I contacted Denise today, said we should all get slapped on the wrist about no voting information out there. We got, we got torn apart in the neighborhood meeting, I don't know if you know...
I saw one comment.
Oh, no, there was more than that.
About what?
There is no place in the Equire or on the website to try to vote.
Advising on the voting.
I just saw one on the other day, didn't I? Today.
Well, there is now.
Yeah, today we blessed them.
But it's the day before, and people will remember it.
Yeah.
People will retain it.
I'll tell them that tomorrow, when they say, you know, we didn't have any information out, but...
I suspect the turnout's going to be pretty low.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see, we'll see. Congressional races, but that's the heated.
Yeah, that's the heated ones, that's right.
Better, so you're...
That's interesting.
You think there's going to be a lot of people?
I do.
The congressional race is the heated one.
I think probably, I won't put a percentage on it, let's say the majority of people in town, they have no idea who's running and why. No idea.
Well, I, you know what, I think you're right.
Well, aren't there about eleven Democrats running and maybe six Republicans?
Oh, there's, it is quite a lot.
Yeah.
The only places where you see people, one person running by themselves, it's up and off the coast coming in those areas, just one person on the ballot, never changes. The only thing I have is that Thursday night, across this planning board, we got about four items dealing with, one is the church property, so hopefully that should go early through.
Oh, please approve it, please approve it.
I'm sure, Karen will alert us if there's any problems that are associated with this thing, so hopefully that'll be well on its way.
Julie, have you heard from, anything from the church in terms of approval coming from them? Are they going to have to wait until the twenty-fourth?
No, but I knew that there was that September date, so...
The other thing that Jim Banks told me, which the church is doing for us, because they like us, I guess now, is they are going to leave the power on in the parish house if we need to do something, they're going to cover that for us. He said it didn't make any sense for them to strip out the power, if we wanted to do something, have to bring a generator or put in the heater, which costs money. So they're just going to cover it, so, yeah.
Makes sense, though.
Yes, they like us, both, some of them like us, before, not so much, so...
Well, they're covering around that.
Well, we're going to give them a check for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so they better like us, so...
That's it for me.
Good, good. Oh, can I, Julie, anything? Can I ask John, anything with Bedrock Gardens, anything developing with them, or they...
They're coming back in front of the planning board Thursday night, because they basically went to the zoning board and got relief with respect to adding some other activities, but they're well within their purview of agricultural tourism.
They came to the ag committee and had a discussion about, the fellow's name that's in charge statewide for this agrotourism, I think his name is Jasper. Anyway, they are, have gone to him and asked him to, for lack of a better word, rule on the definition of agrotourism as it applies to what they're doing. And apparently, he is going to do that. I talked to them at the fair, Bedrock Gardens, and they said, "Yes, we wrote the letter, we've talked to him, and so we'll see how that comes back."
So they're coming back in front of the board, they're still in process, it's supposed to be a traffic study done, I don't think that's been completed at this time. But what I understand, what we had voted on as selectmen, they're following through. I've not heard of any violations to date. There are still some issues in the plans that were just resubmitted, there was supposed to be a fencing between the Grumley property and Bedrock Gardens, I guess there's some questions on that, so, some other areas, but I would say ninety percent of it's been complete from the civil engineering department. So it's well on its way. The issue to deal with is obviously days of the week of operation and hours during the day, those type of things, and how many people and so forth.
All right, good. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.